Good evening, everyone. Tonight is December 4th, 2025. It is 5:33 and this is the School Building Committee meeting. Pam Walsh wasn't able to be here tonight, but with regards to the committee, we have Kate, Linda, Lisa, Jay, Liz, me, Dana, and Nicole. In addition to that, we have from the administration, we have Superintendent Herbert, we have Mr. Dunn, Mr. Cashman, we have Mr. Richard, and we have Ms. Wolf. In addition to that, we have our HMFH representatives and Mr. Kelly from Harvey Construction. Did I miss anyone?
This is Gary from HMFH. Gary Brock.
Gary, sorry. You guys can introduce all yourselves, the HMFH people and stuff, but welcome, Gary. We have a few things on our agenda tonight to go over, starting off with PV procurement, and that is Mr. Dunn, correct?
Yep, so we just wanted to let the committee know, we informed the board Monday night that we're moving forward with procuring the solar panels for the building. There is two components of rooftop solar panels as well as a car canopy. There's still design work being done. And I think there's a goal to try to put more on the roof than on the car canopy, ideally just the roof if I'm not mistaken, but either way, that procurement is happening. The ITC tax credits have some key dates that happen. Most important right now is December 31st in order to be safe harbored, and we're in the process of working to meet that requirement so that we can take advantage of the tax credit that we have built into the budget. So the process has started.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn, just can you provide us with an estimate of what that tax credit would be?
Yep, so it was a little over five million in your budget, and about 30% of that would come back, and that was based on obviously solar panels that would probably not be all domestic. If we were able to get domestic solar panels, highly unlikely, you can confirm that, it would be 40%, but we've budgeted off of 30 because it would be extremely difficult, and especially at this time as this grandfathering or safe harboring is happening, getting these by the 31st and making sure we have custody of them is the biggest thing we're focusing on now, and in agreement that we are purchasing, so.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Dunn or anyone else with regards to?
Budget was a little over five million, 30%, a little over a million and a half dollar tax, direct tax, but that will come back after it's up and running. So it's not like we do it and then they'll give us, but at least there's something. More than the state, sorry.
Just being factual.
That's what I'm telling you.
That's just a fact.
This is in some ways more curiosity than anything, but what does it mean to have custody of them?
That they are titled to us. We've owned them and paid for them.
But we don't have to pay?
In order to safe harbor, we have to buy 5% of what our need is. We will likely do 7% to 10% in case the project changes. We don't want to fall below and then lose it, but as long as we show that we've paid for them and taken ownership this month, it's going to count, and we're on our way with the tax credit at the end of the project. That's what we're trying to achieve.
Very good. Other questions?
I just have a question which is also more curiosity than anything, which is where is the car canopy solar going? So I guess that's really for maybe.
Car canopy, where that's going.
We're still, we're still moving it around a little bit, but this is, this is the drawing of it right now.
So that's, this is Kona Drive, if that gives you an idea.
Oh, I, I'm very familiar with the layout of the site.
I'll leave it to Jim for those at home.
Yeah, thank you.
So right now, there's a lot of car canopy.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Right now, there's a lot of car canopy, but as Jack had mentioned, we're trying to get that shifted more to the building. There are limitations on the building. Fire department has certain limitations or code limitations, so, and then how the building ultimately gets finished in design, so we're still trying to maximize that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions? Very good. Maximize as many domestic as we can, as much domestic as you can get your hands on and put it on the roof if you can, so. All right, without any additional questions, we'll move on to two, Main Street. Holly or Tina, are you coming? Holly?
So we wanted to give you an update on, oh, sorry, we wanted to give you an update on the development of the design of Main Street. I also wanted to let you know that we did, we had a great round of meeting, meetings with teachers back on the 18th. We're going to have some follow-up meetings with some additional groups coming up via Zoom, hopefully in the next two weeks, to get a little more input, but we have started to incorporate some of the feedback that we got throughout the building, but that's still a work in progress. Let's dive into Main Street. So I think we talked about this a little bit the last time when we met. I know Linda, you know, you had some concerns about the cafeteria space, and we've heard that from some other teachers and faculty. So, you know, the cafeteria is in the center of Main Street, and what we've been working on is trying to define that cafeteria and make it a little more contained. So we kind of relocated the stair that takes you up to the second floor, and we've also provided kind of low walls and some built-in benches that really help define the cafeteria zone, so you can see those kind of around the perimeter. Anything to add there? So we've also been working on the configuration of the ramp. So, you know, our goal here has always been to kind of make the experience for somebody using the ramp very similar to somebody using the stair, right? So both the access point for the stair and the ramp, they both happen at the same location. So stair will take you right up to the gym, and if you follow the ramp up here, just kind of go up the ramp. So the ramp takes you up to kind of a stage level here.
And you get on it here?
Yep, and there's sort of this small stage area that can be used for kind of impromptu gatherings. A class could gather around this little stage area. There are some like low steps that kids could sit on and gather here. And then you continue up the ramp, and this will take you all the way up to the second floor. Kind of you loop around and, and you kind of arrive in a similar location to where the stair is bringing you. I think I'm going to dive into some 3D views, but what the ramp is also doing, it's creating some different spaces in Main Street. So it's creating kind of a couple of different zones, so it's not just sort of one big open space. And you'll see we have some 3D views that will highlight those spaces that we're creating. But these, you know, there are spaces with seating in the Main Street could be used for a lunch group. It could be used as a project area by a class.
And you can also like have kids, like if you, some kids wanted to be in a more sheltered area, you could have kids here and kids here, and the person could be standing here, kind of monitoring everybody from that vantage point in case there's only one person.
And, you know, we're starting to show some diversity in seating, but we're trying to give kids kind of different opportunities and different experiences and a way to engage, opportunities to engage kind of within the larger group in a way that they're comfortable with. So here is a 3D view of the cafeteria. So you can see we have the stair, let's see, I'll use my cursor. Here's the stair. So students kind of heading back to the multipurpose room on the ground floor would kind of travel between the end of the ramp and the stair here and this kind of low wall that is kind of providing some closure to the cafeteria area. You can see this is where you would start up the ramp. This is where you would start up the stair. You can kind of see up to the gymnasium here, and I'm just going to keep going, and we can come back to these images and go into greater detail. But this is a view looking, once you've arrived at the very top of the ramp or the top of the stair, kind of looking back down towards the ramp. And one of the things that we've been concerned about is the length of this ramp. I mean, there's almost 350 feet of ramp. So, you know, we started to think about, well, what if there's, what if something happens on the ramp or somebody needs assistance on the ramp? So what we've done is we've kind of created this connection kind of at that halfway point of the ramp. So this is the second floor up here. So there's a little section of stair here that somebody could, you know, kind of jump down onto the ramp from the second floor quickly, but this also kind of creates another opportunity, another small gathering space. So this is kind of what we call a sit-stair. So this is a place where a small group of students could gather. Somebody could bring a class out here and kind of gather on the ramp. And then you would continue up the ramp all the way up to the second floor and you kind of land on this bridge here. Any questions? We have a few more images, so I could.
I'm curious about if you could go back to the caf picture. Where do kids get their food from?
Yeah, okay, sure. That's a good question. Sorry, I should have walked you through that sequence. Let me go back to the plan. So the flow into the kitchen servary, we think, you know, kids will travel along kind of this walkway along the academic wing, head straight across here, and then into the servary. So kids will come into the servary, the serving line kind of runs along here, they'll get their food. There are two kind of checkouts here. They'll check out and then they'll travel here to the cafeteria.
And then what is that white box with the X?
Elevator.
That's the elevator?
That's the elevator, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And then this is sort of, this is the dish drop area back here. So when kids are done eating, they'll head back here and, you know, put their dishes through the dish window. We've got kind of a recycling center here, too.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and then there is a vestibule here to access the courtyard. So if a, you know, teacher wants to take a group of kids out to the caf, into the courtyard, you know, we have access. We didn't have access to the courtyard before. It stepped through the staircase that was up at the northern end of the corridor.
Remember, that's all fenced in there, so that's like a really nice area where the kids are contained and safe in that courtyard.
You should go ahead. Just speak into the microphone though, so thanks.
Where the students drop their dishes off, does it look deceptively small? Will there be a backup in the line? Will there be, will students have to wait? I mean, I don't, I don't know that that's a problem, but does it, is it bigger than it looks?
This is a pretty big area. I mean, I think this is a good-sized dish drop, and then there are kind of three recycling centers that kids can kind of put their trash in, scrape their plate, you know, if you're going to be composting food waste. So, you know, we can look at that in a little more detail with our food service consultant, too, kind of, but I think it's a good, this is a very big elevator, too, so it might be a little bit deceptive.
Is there any concern about noise with the cafeteria being so open into the classroom pods, or is that?
That's a great question. Yeah, so something that, you know, we do have an acoustical consultant on the team who we've been working with closely. This is probably the area of biggest concern. So, you know, we have a certain amount of soft surfaces we're going to provide in this space to absorb the noise that's generated in this space. And we've also been very conscientious about how we're designing kind of this separation here between the classroom wing and the cafeteria, kind of the open Main Street. So, you know, we have acoustic, SEC-rated partitions that are going to align this wall. The doors into the team pods are all on hold open, so if there is a lot of noise in that cafeteria area that's kind of coming back into the team pod, they can shut those doors.
And I'll just make a comment.
This is sort of, you know, a lower ceiling in this area here, so it's not all kind of a tall space.
Holly, just to follow up on that, I just want to make a comment about Oyster River. Oyster River, when I visited Oyster River, they have an open concept cafeteria as well, and I was there when there was lunchtime. I didn't, but was traveling between the floors. It didn't bother me, so I don't know if that's.
That's good to hear.
It's a similar kind of setup.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming all of those tables in that area are on wheels?
Yes.
Right, because in the instance of something community-wide going on in the gymnasium and people coming in to go up the stairs and all, they could probably just walk right through there, right? It's not accessible.
And you could move the tables, and you can't really see the entire space, but see this little gray area over here? This is a pretty large storage room, and we've sized that to accommodate, those are the cheer mats. And I know that, you know, we've talked about, you know, them using the kind of cafeteria as a place for cheer practice because that's what they do right now. So we've, we've sized this for the cheer mat, a competition-sized cheer mat, and then that storage room is also big enough that all the tables can go in there.
There's also probably going to be some storage under the ramp potentially, too, so we're looking for any place to like find storage because storage is always something that schools need, so.
So one other question with regards to the ramp, and I, I'm probably deceived by sizing and spacing of this as well, but there's plenty of room in the ramp so that kids that are using the ramp because of a permanent or temporary disability or anything, will have their friends walking right next to them, and there will be plenty of room for that, correct?
Correct.
All right, I just want to make sure that all kids, everyone can access that.
Six or eight?
Five, yeah.
Five.
Thank you. Just wanted to be sure that everybody's going to be able to make use of that because I think it'll be very heavily used.
Yeah, agreed.
Other questions?
Few more images of the ramp, so I'll just kind of keep walking you through the ramp. So this is an image from that top second floor landing, kind of looking down into that sit-stair. This is where, you know, there's that short staircase that you could kind of use to jump on the ramp. This is the gymnasium to your left here, so these are the two main entrances to the gym. And then this is the final image. So this is what it kind of looks like all the way at the west end of Main Street. So as I was saying, you know, we're kind of using the ramp and these components to kind of break down at Main Street. Creates some different spaces, so this kind of, kind of creates a more quiet, kind of intimate zone at the very end of Main Street that could be used for, you know, project area, it could be used as for a small lunch group.
Could also be used for the after-school program. They're going to probably be using Main Street a lot for that. And we've been talking about areas that we can build in storage for that program, too. There's a storage room right next to that orange wall that we're showing in the background there.
Any questions about sort of Main Street and the cafeteria? We move on to the next space.
Yep.
So we wanted to show you the development of the media center. So the media center is kind of over the entry on the second floor. So it will be kind of prominent as you approach the school. You'll see the media center. It'll be a real feature of the school. And zooming in to the media center, this is the main entrance to the media center. It's been sized to accommodate kind of two classroom groups, so one class could kind of use this end of the media center. We've got kind of a teaching wall here, and then a second group of students could gather and use this section of the media center, and there's a teaching wall here. We've got, you know, book stacks in the center and around the perimeter, and then some soft seating zones for kids to sit and read. There's also a maker space that is part of the media center. This is the maker space here. So the maker space is also accessible from the corridor, so a teacher could bring a class into the maker space. We have kind of a lower section that will have kind of storage and a 3D printer and some equipment, and then kind of a teaching zone here up against the kind of curtain wall looking out towards the, over the athletic fields. There's a small, kind of a recording studio green screen room. This is this room here labeled Media Tech. So the school does, what, a news program, Jay, or news program?
Yeah, we currently do some of that.
So we've got the recording studio here. And then this is sort of the tech office and their teaching space. So this is where students would go to get help with their computer. So this is a help desk, but it's also a teaching space for the IT specialist. I've got a couple of 3D views, so we can kind of dive right in. This is a view kind of from the very north end of the media center, kind of looking back towards the entrance. The entrance is about here. So we are taking advantage of some of that double-height space and that kind of gable form that faces the athletic fields. This is sort of one of the kind of softer reading zones right up against. We've got a kind of a big window that is right adjacent to the entrance.
Our bookshelves are empty right now, so it feels a little sad, but there will be books.
We'll move the books over from the existing school.
And this is a view of the maker space. So this is a space that's right above the entry, so it'll be a very kind of prominent space that you'll see when you approach the building. We've got a kind of a higher ceiling at the front half of this space. There's a teaching wall in this space and then there'll be kind of a grid with some cord rails. So this can be really used as an active kind of hands-on maker space. And then this is another view of that maker space. There is a sort of little overlook from the third-floor corridor that looks down into that maker space. This window here looks back into the Main Street. Any, any questions? About media? Uh-oh, what just happened? Sorry.
Just accelerated through a presentation.
We're done. All right. So now we just wanted to look at some of the kind of career pathway spaces, kind of the hands-on learning opportunities in the building. So we have this food tech classroom that is on the ground floor. It's right off of Main Street. And this classroom has really been thought about as a really flexible space that the school can use for all sorts of different learning opportunities and after-school programs. It can also be used, you know, to serve a spaghetti dinner to a team, to an athletic team. It can, we have an operable partition here that this room can be opened up to the Main Street. So you can kind of have activities that flow in and out of the Main Street and into the food tech classroom. Could also be used as sort of a concession stand for events that are happening in the auditorium, which is right across the Main Street. The classroom has cooking stations around the perimeter, kind of on the walls. And then the furniture in the middle is flexible and movable. There is a demonstration station here at the front and a teaching wall here with, you know, some technology. And this space can be used as a health classroom. It can be used for after-school programs. Two images, yeah. There's a second image here. So this is an image, this is, this is that operable partition that can open the space up to the Main Street. And you can see the cooking stations around the perimeter and then the flexible furniture in the center of the space.
Holly, is it fully independent? Like, no, you wouldn't need to use the other kitchen prep area? This, it looks like there's an oven there, do I see? Is there a stove?
Yeah, there's stove, there's a sink, there's refrigeration. Yes, it's fully independent. Yeah, and there's an adjacent storage room, too. Other equipment that needs to be stored. Any thoughts? Okay. Moving right along, looking at some of the other kind of hands-on learning opportunities in the building. We have the wood shop kind of STEM classroom, which is on the ground floor in this kind of north, north end of the building here. Let's see. So this is, again, you know, a flexible space, but we have, you know, we have a rail on top of, we'll have cord rails hanging from a pipe grid up above, so the space can be reconfigured. We do have an operable, we have kind of a garage door here that will allow this space to open up to kind of an outdoor terrace where kids can bring a project that they're working on outside. We have, you know, we're kind of trying to finalize the equipment, working with the faculty. I know they just got a new CNC, Jay, what's that? That even, they were just unpacking it when we were there back on the eighteen.
Say CNC?
CNC, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So we'll accommodate that in this space.
Just curious, what about cordless tools in places like that?
What about what?
Cordless tools, would there be a mix of that as well, other than just straight power cords?
Yeah, we're, we're working with, you know, the faculty to figure out what the equipment will be. And you can see kind of around the perimeter of the room, we have, we're providing pegboard, sorry. So this orange stuff that you see on the wall is all pegboard, too. Where all of the tools and equipment could be stored.
And I assume there's like ventilation for this room for dust and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, we're talking about dust collection. So we're talking about either kind of maybe using point-of-use dust collection rather than a centralized system. So those are conversations that we're still having with the faculty. And we just need to get their equipment list and then we need to meet with our engineers again and figure out how we're gonna do dust collection.
And actually, I had this thought, actually, just as you were changing from the food tech thing, was also ventilation for that? It looked like there were hoods on all those?
Yes, there are hoods, yeah. And we're working through that with our engineers, too.
Wonderful, thanks.
To be a little persnickety with, to be a little persnickety with language, the food tech seems a little oxymoronic. Maybe it could be food and culinary skills space because we, food is not technology. It just doesn't, anyway, I vote for food and culinary skills space.
Great suggestion.
Is, is there a storage room associated with the, that area, the wood storage? Just, I know, like, just from looking in some of those places before, there's, there's piles of wood all over the place. So where, like, if they're working on projects, where are they storing them? Because they're not, they're probably not taking them to their locker anywhere. So my sense is, is there's probably gonna be a pretty substantial storage space to accommodate all the different tools as well as all the parts and pieces.
Yep. We do have a storage room on the second floor, actually, that's gonna be shared by wood shop and robotics. So, yeah, we'd love to get a little more storage down on the ground floor for the wood shop. So we're, we're kind of working on redistributing some of the storage, so, yes, that is a goal.
Yeah, it's just the...
So we've talked to them about the types of projects that they do. So I think they do, they do a bubble gum machine. I can't remember what else. But the projects are all fairly small, so, you know, they're not making, you know, large pieces of furniture. So, and you can see in the robotics classroom, we are showing project storage shelving. So we need to kind of finesse the space a little bit more.
It, it's probably more just the raw materials. My, my, you know, and I don't know if Jack has any better knowledge, but like, they probably buy the stuff in some sort of bulk. So it's probably coming in in eight, ten, twelve, sixteen-foot lengths that they gotta store thirty, forty boards that they buy once a year or something, is my guess. But maybe not, maybe they're buying two-foot boards, so.
We'll check in with the staff. I mean, what we've done in, in some of our vocational schools is have racks, like, on the wall so that you can store the plywood and store the kind of loose lumber. So we'll look into that. Thank you.
Other questions? All good questions, thank you very much.
Yep. We've got one more space to, to show you, which is the robotics classroom. The robotics classroom is right above the wood shop on the second floor. And it's adjacent to the art classroom, so. You know, they, they do, you know, they share some supplies and equipment. So this is the robotics classroom. The center of the classroom, what we're showing here, these are sort of the robotics tables that kind of flip up, so this space can also be reconfigured. We, we have some computer stations around the perimeter of the room with storage above them. Let's see, so I'll show you, oh, let me go back to this view. So you're, this is looking back towards the entrance. This is the teaching wall in the space. These are the, kind of the robotics tables. And you can see perhaps some provisions for computer stations around the perimeter with some flexible shelving for project storage. And then they've got a whole storage wall here on the south wall of the building. And this is another view looking back towards desks around the perimeter with the project storage. This is storage for materials and equipment. And then they do have a larger storage room kind of around the corner. And again, we've got a pipe grid, you know, that will be outfitted with cord rails. So they can bring, you know, power to any point within the room. That's it.
Questions? I'm sure there'll be a lot of details that we will be filling in as we progress through this design. Mr. Cashman, do you have any questions?
No, we've, we met yesterday, we met today with police and fire and emergency services and stuff. So we've, we've really been looking at these a lot and making a lot of comments along the way. I think we'd like, would, would you guys agree that you like the design and what we, what we're seeing?
And then you have the upcoming meetings in January as it relates to what the planning board and some others, I think, so people know that that's coming. Before you get into the planning, go ahead, Lucy.
Did police and fire flag any concerns when you met with them?
No, I think they have some requests moving forward that we include them in more conversations as we drill down into the details. We're gonna have a specific meeting on security cameras and placement. And they're gonna chat with the state fire marshal and see if we can get some time with them before we submit the drawings in August, which would be great. And we told them that we would give them our sixty percent set, which is our next deadline for cost estimate. So we said we'd send that their way. We gave them actual hard copy drawings today, so they're gonna look through those and they may have more questions, but it was a good, really good conversation.
And then I just wanted to give Linda, put her on the spot and have a little discussion with Jay. Is the input from our teachers, do we feel like our teachers have had adequate input? You may have a different answer than her, but, you know, I just am looking for input.
I think we've just gotten started, really. And I know it's, you know, there's more insight that we'll get. And I think we primarily, we focus on some of the more complicated spaces, I would call, like arts, STEM, some of the images you saw. And then, you know, the architects will be circling, circling back to some of the other groups like, you know, ELA, math, science, social studies classrooms that, it's not that they're not complicated, they're just, you know, not as complex as some of these other spaces. And staff have been amazing and people are excited. I mean, I look at these images and it's, it's exciting, really, to look at and some of the trends that we're gonna do. And I think what we're learning with technology and things that, you know, we want our kids involved, particularly middle school kids, in hands-on activities. So it's really exciting and the opportunities, like, just the, some of these spaces is gonna provide not only our students during the day, but the community outside of school hours, too. Very exciting.
And, yeah, I think teachers have felt good about the input. And, you know, so far, what we're looking at is so much big picture that I think as we go along and start fine-tuning and looking at smaller details, that's when I think they would appreciate a lot of being able to give a lot of input, you know, like on furniture choice or, you know, things like that. But I think so far, staff are feeling very positive and almost don't believe it's happening, so.
Well, yeah, I would, I would encourage you to have a lot of teacher input. I would also encourage the superintendent to have high school faculty involved a little bit in this as, because I see a great, with these, these are amazing spaces and I see great opportunities for continuity as we move, you know, that it becomes the whole school experience as we move forward.
Career pathways.
Yeah. Other questions?
Can I ask a question? And I know I missed a meeting, a couple of meetings back and maybe it was discussed then, but I just wanna understand the process a little bit, kind of where we're at going forward. So the, you know, the board approved a certain number in January. I understand that's when we're gonna talk about how that's gonna be financed with bonds. And then that's, we move a little bit further as the drawings get further along, then the pricing gets more finite or clearer. And then is that when decisions have to be made, if things have to be cut or not? Or is the expectation that everything's gonna fit within this budget at this point?
Our expectation is we can't go above the budget. It would be great if it would be under budget. So the next cost, like I was just saying, is the sixty percent documents, which will be submitted April first. So that's when Harvey will take a look at it and, you know, look at the estimate. We're hoping to have them involved in more of our meetings moving forward. And, you know, we were just talking about alternate materials before the meeting started. So I think that they'll be giving us their input on that. And, you know, that will be a means of cost measures. And they'll also be looking at it for constructability, better ways to do things, you know. So I think that's the schedule moving forward. And then we're hoping for early bid packages at that point, too. So we need to get the geothermal wells in earlier than the rest of the building. We're waiting to hear back from the, the testing to tell us whether we need all the rammed aggregate piers or not. If we do still need those, then those would start early, too. Be great if we could get them in in March, starting in March, but we'll see where we get. And then the final drawings will be finished in August. And that's when construction will go forward, you know, full force. Does that make sense?
It, it makes complete sense. I guess, I, I know it's, is the expectation that everything we want is going to be able to be included at the price point we're talking about? I guess that's my question.
I do think there's always the possibility that we'll need to do value engineering at the sixty percent level to make sure that we are still on budget. I mean, the goal would be to be able to switch out materials so that we can get there and not have to give things up. You know, we would never wanna compromise durability in the building. We don't wanna compromise anything educational. So we would do our best to, you know, make the changes that are not going to affect any of those things. Maybe that some things need to move to the add alternate category again, like we've been talking about. But, yeah, the goal is to be on budget or under budget.
And that's what I was going to ask. I know we had done that round of looking at would be nice, et cetera. Do we do another round of that?
Yeah, we'll probably have to, yeah. And then it may happen again, too, at, at bid time, too, depending on how the bids come in. We hope not, but...
Sure, go ahead.
Matt, did you ever get a chance to sit down with, like, the facility crews from the, the elementary schools to go through and get their input in terms of, we've had a period of time now so they can weigh in on what worked well, what hasn't worked well? I mean, probably, probably the what hasn't worked well is the most important piece. If there are elements that were incorporated that have become problematic, whether it be a type of hardware or a type of material, whatever it may be, so that we can, you know, it's always great to say, this worked great, we'd like to do it again. But particularly, you know, please don't do this anymore because it's, it's a nightmare for these guys.
We definitely have. We sat and met with them once. We, I've shared the plans and will continue to share the plans. I know that location of closets and storage and that sort of thing and spreading it out, we've implemented that through feedback from them, so. But that, that will be a process that will continue as we go through design.
Yeah, I think learning from what we did before, if there are things that didn't work well or whether it be a material or something, understanding that is just beneficial to, don't make the same mistake twice.
Yeah, we agree.
Or unnecessary. Was there something that just didn't need, so?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're gonna have to maintain it, so.
Exactly.
Having, having something that's gonna work well and not be overly cumbersome for you is gonna help. You know, it's not gonna be great if your, the operational budget is substantially higher than what you would expect it to be, so.
And I think difficult areas, too. You, you look at the design and then, once we can, I think, 3D views of the interior design and the location of the windows and the heights of different aspects of the building, those are portions that I wanna also bring them back in and have them look at so that we can know that going in before final design.
Yeah, we're gonna have to plan for a lift so that you can access some of the taller spaces.
And also, to your point, consider the outside, the outside windows. And if they're very high up, we need to be able to get access to them so we can... And if they're very high up, we need to be able to get access to them so we can keep them clean and that sort of things.
Yeah, just maintaining the building. It's, this is.
That's right.
You're not buying something that you're going to give away. It's, you're going to be out there tasked with, or I say you, it's, it's, it's your crew. They're going to be, you're going to be the one that says, okay, you need to go fix this. And the guy looks at you and goes, how do you want me to do that? So avoiding that would be fantastic.
Totally agree. Go ahead.
It's sort of dovetailing off of what you just talked about, Dana. For the new police station, they gave us a cost estimate of the cost of utilities and operations, which is substantially higher than the current cost of operations and utilities. So remind me, do we have cost comparisons for the cost of operations and the cost of utilities? And I just have to go back into my notes and look that up.
Yes, and we did, we did life cycle cost analysis at the beginning when we were looking at different systems and that played into, you know, which system we ended up choosing.
Sure, do we have a, can you do, have an easy way to grab what our increased annual costs are for utilities or operations?
We can bring it to the next meeting.
That'd be great for a reminder. Thank you.
Goal was decreased annual costs.
And remember, our goal is to be net zero, right?
I remember that, that our electricity bills are going to go down, but if we're spending a whole bunch of money washing windows, just, not literally, but.
The life cycle cost analysis didn't look at window washing or anything that detailed. It looked more at like systems in the building, so.
But I meant, as an example.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
Just kind of going back when we were talking about schedule a few minutes ago. I am also on a couple of committees for the city and one of them is for, is transportation. And we've had comments and requests from citizens about looking at pedestrian access, particularly in the Cypress and Noyes street area. And my understanding is that there is some, there's some evaluation of that going on. And when would that potentially be?
Yeah, sure. So we have engaged a traffic engineer, transportation engineer to look at this issue. They've done their preliminary review. We're actually going to meet with them on Friday, but we will be bringing that before the building committee shortly. The other thing that I want to mention is that we are submitting to the planning board in about two weeks. So we are submitting a courtesy review only, but we will be hopefully on the agenda for January 22nd for the planning board and January 6th for the architectural design review commission. And so, as I mentioned, it's a courtesy review, so we are not bound by the comments that are given by the planning board, but we will listen to them.
And will that be the full traffic study or the preliminary?
So we've met with the city. We met with the transportation department and they helped us develop the scope for this study. It's not a full transportation study or traffic study. It's slightly more limited in scope because we are not changing the use of the site. So if we don't change the use of the site, we don't have to do a full blown study. But pedestrian access is one of the issues that they asked us to look at.
Yeah, and just following up on that, one of the concerns, and I'm happy to hear there's pedestrian access, but also bike access. Currently, South Street, the bike lane is also the car parking lane, so you really can't bike there when the cars are parked there.
Not really a bike lane.
So it's not really a bike lane in that respect. The entrances from like Conan and some of what we consider the back have no sidewalks for anything or bike lanes. And so when we come before the planning board or when we're interacting with the city, are there plans for the, yeah, requesting that the city upgrade these facilities so that, because, you know, one of the things that they communicated to us was that that was one of their goals to have access where we don't have kids having to get out into the street or anything like that. And that we had both bike or wheeled, whatever, access as well as pedestrian access and, you know, and then of course, traffic.
Great, so our, our goal is to have this study completed for that, for the planning board hearing so we can address those issues.
And then the question I was going to ask is we see, you know, these are great 3D diagrams and illustrations. I really like all of the natural light based on orientation and use. And your studies, have you accounted for glare? Are there ways to attenuate some of the light that may be coming in on kids' screens or?
Yes. So we are doing daylighting studies. We've got somebody working on that in the office right now. So we will be looking at, we will be looking at that. So I think some of the lighting in some of these images is a little glaring, too. This face actually faces north, so actually the light in this room will be very nice and very even. But we have some sun shading already shown throughout the building in certain areas that we anticipate might be an issue, so.
I assume such. And I love, don't get me wrong, I really appreciate the light in the media center that is natural light as well as throughout this whole building. I just wanted to make sure that we were, you know, looking at it from all angles, so to speak.
And all the spaces will have shades on the inside, too, that the teachers can pull when needed.
Go ahead, Mr. Dunn.
So just to follow up on a couple of things with Dana, you had asked two things that we learned from the other project. One that's telling right now is snow. Ability to store that snow on site rather than have to haul it off because they're two expensive items that we do have at Krista McAuliffe, because they're much they work with, and the high school.
Yep.
All right? So that's something that we want to make sure is planned for. Second thing, if I can speak, Linda, is internet and two buildings not being dependent on the same circuit. So the city in its, in its wisdom, and this is a positive thing, put in dark fiber among all its buildings and school buildings 20, 30 years ago. So it's a private fiber line that comes from the telephone pole in. So when that goes down, you don't call it Verizon or who your provider. That, you own it. That's our problem. So we recently had a problem on Monday that knocked internet and phones out to our runlet. But the sister school over across the way, Abbott Downing, is all tied on that. We will separate that when this new building is built. So if it goes down, that building's down, not, not, not near your cousin or your sister or brother over there. So we will work to fix that. But it is very, it's very specific fiber. And it was a little challenging this week, but it's up and running now, which is good. So that's something that we did learn that we will fix in the next building. And then go into the finance question. There's a number of different things that we're looking at right now. The fifth is a hearing on the bond resolution itself. They won't make decisions on the borrowing part and how it's financed and all that. It's getting legal requirements first satisfied, then we will plug the bond pieces in. And those bonds, we're going to be looking at a number of different things. Bond anticipation notes, general obligation, non-taxable bonds, taxable bonds, rebates, detrust funds, items in here, the HVAC, geothermal, and the solar panels, which we're actively engaged in right now and being able to meet the FIOC requirements, what's called foreign entity of, I'm sorry, of concern. That's a whole IRS thing, but we're working with that. And then obviously coordination with the city and its projects. We understand that even though, in case you didn't know, we are now number one on the list for state building aid, but we are number one at getting nothing. So I think that's important that if we did, that would help, but to wait any longer, as you've heard, two million every six months, even though our entitlement would be on there, but it is posted on our site and we are number one. It is interesting, as a side note, 17 projects that were approved and grandfathered, 14 of those 17 have dropped off because they did not file their May paperwork. We did, so the one that was ahead of us, Colebrook, they dropped off. We are now number one. So write to your legislature and see what they can do to help. But, you know, as we say, and then also again, looking at these ITC credits and the rebates, how they all factor in. So there'll be a number of components to look at and how we finance in this. And again, coordinating with the city so that these things are not all hit at the same time. And obviously coming in under budget is going to be key. But we'll be active and very aggressive.
And how are we paying for the solar panels that we have to purchase now?
So projected into the fund would have been at the end of this year, a little over 20 million. We maintain 5% of the general fund since 2005 for debt service, regardless of whether we have over and above the debt. So if our debt makes up 2.7 and the other, there's no debt for the other port, that goes into the facilities and renovation trust fund. And the board has been consistent in doing that. We have used that money to help pay for all this so far. We have no interest that we have paid, no bonds we have done on this project yet. We will now go and reimburse ourselves for those proceeds, which the board voted to do that. And we have money to be able to do this because there'll be about 11 million right now left, but we will use proceeds to buy our 5% to 10%. So it'll be a couple hundred thousand dollars so that we can secure that and we don't ruin the ITC credit. So it's smart planning that the school board has done since 2005 and has maintained that for 20 years now. And it's really given an enormous amount of flexibility to be where we are today.
But you're, you're only buying 5%? Is that what you said?
5% is the safe harbor, but we'll buy by 7% to 10% so that we make sure we're over and above.
So 7% to 10% of 5 million?
Yep.
Right, so you're not, you're not spending 5 million now?
No, no. All we are buying is the safe harbor amount, say, when you do buy the rest, it's accrued back to the December of 2025 so we can get the tax credit, the direct tax credit. Yes.
Jack, if, so we're number one on this list for building aid. If, for some miracle, it does get put into a budget while we're under construction, are we still eligible?
Once there's a shovel on the ground, it's over. We're off the list. So we have asked for clarification on what they are reporting we would get, which we know is not a number because you take 40% of the number, that's not what we're going to get. And what we reported in our DOE application to say, if there was money, this is what we suggest that you use because we're going to get asked about it. And I've asked for a letter clarifying what that would be. And I will show what that model will, will look like if we had gotten it. Because under the new rules, they fund 80% of the project upfront and the final 20 when the project is done. It would significantly help us. And I know that's been the hope throughout this project, but they funding nothing.
But again, there's no guarantee that there's ever going to be building aid ever again.
Two million every six months?
Yeah, so.
Right?
I just can't lose sight of that.
You're at the point where.
Thinking that we might get it, it's.
I mean, unless there's legislation that says, hey, we'll grandfather your project, you were only three left, and when there is funding in the next biannual, we'll reimburse you, but that's.
Yeah, again, there's.
There needs to be pressure. Yeah, exactly. The biannual budget is set.
It is not expected.
It's not happening.
I will, yeah, on to that end, having been on the board for a fair amount of time. We started this project in 2016, had a lot of work in 2017. There was no building aid, so we chose to wait. Building aid came back, albeit a lot smaller. It went away again. Here we are, nine years later, without building aid, and the price has increased significantly. At the time, our estimates were closer to the 80 to 90 million dollars or so at that time. And that is what I believe the Department of Education person who came in here told us that a lot of people drop off because it really is cost prohibitive to wait. You end up losing more than you have potential to gain. So the board is aware of that and, you know, I would very much love if everyone wrote to their state representative and senator and told them to, to reinstate, you know, 80 million dollars, 100 million dollars in the building aid fund for January, for not only for us, but for all the other school districts out there. But I do not believe that is going to happen. Other questions?
Just one other update. The geothermal test wells have been completed. The well is being tested and we should get a report by the end of the year about the capacity of the geothermal well. We'll be able to finish designing the well. That's exciting.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Does anyone have anything else for this meeting, superintendent? Anyone on the building committee? That being said, I will adjourn this, this building committee meeting tonight. Go ahead, I didn't hit the gavel yet.
This is your last building committee, we believe, and you're, after what, 11, 13 years of service?
I will not be on the, yeah, I will not be on the school board starting in January after 11 years of service. So, but you're not getting off that easy. I will still be, you know.
So we'll see you in the air and in person?
Yes.
Well, we appreciate it.
I am still, you know, as a, as a citizen, as a taxpayer, you know, as a member of the community, I still have a very strong vested interest in this project. I think it's extremely important, so, but I do want to thank, and I'm, you know, I may volunteer for a committee coming up in the future, so you may see me again. So you don't get rid of me that easily. But with that, I would like to thank everyone on this committee personally, if I don't get to talk or see you, see you again in an official capacity for your efforts. Everybody has put a lot of time, a lot of work. The amount of documents I know you read, well, you can just go onto our website and just see how many of them are and formulate your questions. And it is greatly appreciated by me because I think this is a tremendously important project. So thank you all. And with that, unless somebody has something, I will now adjourn this committee meeting. Thank you.